... to it, we need to find better and less toxic treatments for our children. So on behalf of all the families and children affected by this, thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Rose and Joel, of course, there's no words to say to you, but we respect and acknowledge your courage for coming forward, and you have to know that we're going to be there for whatever you need from us and whatever we could ever do to make you feel better and help others that were sitting in your shoes tonight. So, thank you for your courage, and please know you have a friend in all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one is a proclamation proclaiming the month of October 2022 as Fire Prevention Month. And Councilmember Feng, you're going to do this one for us?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Whereas the City of Millbrae is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Millbrae, and whereas the U.S. Fire Department responded to 379,500 home fires in 2020, resulting in 2,630 civilian deaths, according to the National Fire Protection Associations. And whereas working smoke alarm and sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the events of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meets the needs of all their family members, including those with centuries of physical disabilities. And whereas all residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarm and know how to respond. And whereas residential fire sprinklers are a life safety system that may keep a fire small and allow time for all family members to escape. And whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection educations. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Month theme "Fire Won't Wait: Plan Your Escape" effectively serves to remind us it is important to develop and practice your family home fire escape plan. So now therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Fire Prevention Month. And I believe we have in the audience today our fire chief, Bruce Barron, from Central County Fire Department. Would you like to come up to the podium? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember. And as you present that proclamation to our chief, he also is going to have a presentation of the Central County Fire Department annual report.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mayor Olivia, Vice Mayor Pappin, and the rest of the council, and the citizens of Millbrae. It's good to be here. Next slide. This is the annual report from Central County Fire Department, and I'll try to keep it brief. So just the agenda, what I'm going to go over, who we are, administration, operations, prevention, CCFD in the community, and any questions that you may have. I will try to answer. Next slide. So this is our mission statement. We, the members of the Central County Fire Department, are dedicated to providing the highest level of service for our communities. We live by this creed, this mission, and you can see our... We live by this creed. Anyway, thank you. Next slide. So administration, the big thing that we have going on right now is the standard cover study. We hired a consultant months ago to go ahead and get this study. We actually just received the first technical review. And the process is that we take this technical review, we go through it to make sure that all the facts are correct there, titles, and all those things are correct with that study. So actually, it's 170 pages as it is right now. We just finished going through it, and we finished half of the read-through and edits on last Monday, and we're going to be meeting this Monday. Then we get it back to the consultant, they make all those changes, and then they get it back to us for a technical, second technical review. That second technical review includes the recommendations that the consultant recommends. Then we do that review, that goes back to the consultant, and then we finally get back the standard of cover study that is available for the public and the councils to take a look at. We have some new hires. We hired two lateral firefighters that have been on board for a couple of months now, and they're working out very well. And we also have a third that's in the academy right now, and he'll graduate in December. We also hired a new EMS manager, an accounting technician, to fill some vacancies in prevention and admin. We did have one retirement, Lisa Bartolo, she's 16-year with us, and she retired on July 28th. So, a big loss for us. She was a very nice lady. And the board approved the budget back in April of 2022. Next slide. So here's your budget. I'm sure this was gone over with you before. The members' contribution, our budget's about $31 million. Millbrae's share was $8,600,000. It was an increase of 8.3% over the previous year, and that relates to, pretty big increase, but that relates all to pers costs and unfunded liabilities that is pretty much out of our control to control with that. Next slide, please. So pretty busy in the operations part. We have eight firefighters right now on probation. Probation's a big lift for our engine companies and truck companies for the training component of it, and their probation lasts 18 months. So I hear that all eight of those are doing very well, and we're hoping that they all pass. We have established a new training division. In fact, our training division is right next door at Station 37. We have a battalion chief in place that's new, and we hope to have two captains, one from San Bruno and one from Central County, on board, and we will be partnering up with San Bruno and our training division to offer the required training throughout the year. We went on eight strike teams so far this year. It didn't seem like that many, but as we started toning up, it was a ton. We just got back, we had two rigs out, our Type 6, which is our wild-in rig, and one of our Type 1 engines, and they just got back from the most recent fire that was just out here east. And we just received our new ladder truck, and we're hoping to get that in service very soon. Next slide. So fire prevention, a lot of construction going on. I'm sure you can see that in both, more in Hillsborough, not in Hillsborough, in Burlingame and in Millbrae. A ton probably the most predominant, I would say, in Millbrae, but some of those things are becoming, getting to the completion. Millbrae Station, we're told by our fire marshal that's getting close to the completion. That's really good to see. And the beginning of the agent project, which looks like it's moving along, it looks like they're ready to dig a big hole right there. So it's going to be really interesting to see that north end of Rawlins, because Burlingame as well as Millbrae has big plans for that area. So it'll be really kind of exciting to see that area grow. A lot of new occupancies, apartment buildings, restaurants, more in Burlingame at that. CERT, we just completed a refresher this last Saturday. I know I attended it myself as a deputy chief, and our intent with CERT in general is for the fire department to come more involved on the operations side of it. I know it was, you know, we had instructors from the fireside, but have the fire department more involved. In fact, we have a USAR drill coming up here, and we're looking at inviting a certain amount of CERT people to go ahead and observe that. It'll be a three-day, it's a county-wide drill, it'll be three days, and it'll be on one of the buildings out on Airport in Burlingame that they're tearing down. So it should be a good opportunity for all those CERT folks. And just investigation, code enforcement complaints, and that kind of sums up the prevention world. Next slide. Most recent three big events, and it just happened to be one in each of our customers' cities. So Millbrae Art and Wine Festival, always a good time. I always try to attend the Millbrae one. That's kind of pretty much the only one I do attend, because it's kind of got the biggest, it's got everything. So, and it's usually a great day, and usually have the hottest day of the year on that day. So it was a fun day. And we, so that Millbrae Art Festival is one of the only functions that we actually upstaff. We bring on another engine, because you're almost tripling the size of the population here in Millbrae. So I think it's very important to be able to make sure that we're covered with that. We did have a Neighbor Fest, which was put on by their neighborhood network in Hillsborough and the CERT folks. And that's just kind of a question-and-answer session, it's a half-day, it goes from 9:00 to noon. Just a very nice function that they have in Hillsborough. And then, of course, the Burlingame Art and Wine Festival, they just call it Burlingame on the Avenue. And again, we don't need to staff up for that, because it's just not as large as the one in Millbrae. Next slide. So this is just some general stats, if you're interested. So for Millbrae, I think last year you had 31% of the call volume for us throughout the year. This time around it's 37%, so a little bit busier. And then you can see, let me see, Burlingame was about 50%, 51% of the call volume, and Hillsborough was about 12% to 13% of the call volume. You can see predominantly EMS, 60% to 70% of our calls are EMS, and that goes across the board in all the cities with that. Total calls for this last year, for the year period, September to September, was 7,554, and you can see Millbrae was 2778. Our two biggest stations are Station 37 and Station 34, and they seem to kind of go back and forth, who's the busiest. The crews I know have a little competition to see who's the biggest, so they have a little bargaining rates for that. Next slide. And that'll bring us to any questions that you may have.
Counsel, any questions?
Did you hear you use that? That's correct.
No questions, counsel?
I think we have some.
You can't see hand raising.
I can't.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I'm not sure how to connect with the mayor. Thank you, and congratulations to Lisa. I believe she's always been a great help for Millbrae CERT over the years on that, and I hope she's enjoying her retirement. And thank you for all the merch... I can't speak tonight. Mutual aid calls. Question, just so the public can understand, it's my understanding that when we go out for mutual aid and it's a FEMA project, we do recoup some of that funding.
So yes, when we go out on, whether it's a FEMA response, and that's usually our USAR or a state response, which is usually CAL FIRE or OES, and then you actually have the federal, not especially FEMA, but federal fires, we're reimbursed for all of those. Our Type 6 engine, just so you understand, that is loaned to us by the state, so we don't get reimbursed for that engine. But when we send one of our Type 1s, that's the big red fire engine, we actually get paid kind of a lease when that goes out. Plus, feds will actually pay us for the person going out and also the backfill. And I believe this state's pretty similar to that. So, short answer to your question, yes, we get reimbursed for all those deployments.
Great. And the boot camp on November 12th and 13th, which I think is fantastic, I wanted to thank Bill Riley, who is our emergency management coordinator, if I've got his title correctly. He came and spoke at the Millbrae Leos Club. I think we had over 60 Leos there, many of whom we look forward to them getting that kind of training and doing more project with young people on that. So thank you, and thanks to Bill on that one. Question, we're coming out of COVID. I don't want to say anything about anything happening, because we don't want to jinx anything. We had a disaster preparedness day, our first one in Millbrae in November of 2019, and we haven't had one. Do you think in the next year or so we can begin to plan for that? My greatest concern is, as our city's rep to Emergency Services Council, that our canyons are in the best shape they can be. I know we kind of look at Hillsborough, and Hillsborough's got a whole special program for that. But recently, the San Mateo County Parks District did a clearing in Yenipacera Park, which has those eucalyptus trees, and down, Millbrae is downwind of that. So if we can start looking at more of that fire prevention as we're coming out of COVID, and we can maybe get back to a little more normal.
Yes, I can talk to Bill, and I can talk to Christine in our fire prevention, and see if we can put something together for that. I attended that day, and it was actually, seemed like it was well-attended, and it was just really...
The fire day?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, great, great. We just, we've had a number of little fires, the Caltrain fires that set things on fire. So it's just a good opportunity to learn from those experiences and figure out, have we, do we have the communication with our neighborhoods? Do they know what's going on? We didn't have to evacuate that time, which was great, the Caltrain fires. But that's the second set of fires in that neighborhood in two years. So just that we keep in mind that the wooie may be up on the west side of Millbrae, but the fires seem to be happening on the east side. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, do we have any other questions?
I don't see any other questions. Did you have a comment?
No, I'm just looking around for you.
Thanks for looking out.
Thank you, Chief. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chief Barron. Appreciate all your hard work, and just have to say, stay, say, safe up there, please.
I will. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All righty. We're going to move on.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you. We'll move to the agenda overview. City Manager?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. So as we continue with the agenda, we have our calendar of events and reports of bills and claims, which is our standard item, those are informational. And then I would like to, as part of my briefing, provide our Employee of the Year Recognition Awards Program. And then we have a report out from September 13th and September 27th, closed sessions. And I believe there is no reportable action on either of those closed-session items. Then we move to approval of the meeting minutes. Approval of the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of July 12th, 2022, and the special meeting of July 26th, 2022. We have no oral reports or comments from any committee or commissions this evening. Then we move into public communication. This is the part on the agenda that any member of the public can address, any item not on the agenda, and public comments are limited to three minutes. Then we move to the consent calendar. We have three items, starting with item number five. This is the standard adoption of the resolution finding the proclaimed state of emergency continues, and that the City Council can still have meetings remote. Item number six is to receive and file the monthly general fund financial report for the period ending August 31st, 2022. And item number seven is to consider approval of a fee waiver for the Rotary Kids Carnival scheduled for October 30th of this year. Moving on to public hearing, we have one public hearing item, and that's item number eight. That's consideration of a resolution making draft findings and declaration, and intent to consider overriding the San Mateo City-County Association of Governments and the San Mateo County Airport Ladies Commission's determination of inconsistency with the policies of the Comprehensive Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan for the environs of San Francisco International Airport regarding the zoning and text amendments to Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, allowing Biosafety Service Level 2. And the location of this is on the north side of Millbrae Avenue, and the southern limit line of the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan, west of the Caltrain Station and east of El Camino Rio. Then we move to existing business. There is no existing business. We have one item, item number nine on new business, and that's to consider a resolution approving a contract change order to the Millbrae Recreation Center project with a block construction company in the amount of $1,489,600, increasing the total construction budget by $1,639,600, because that includes a contingency. And this is for the Lincoln Circle Infrastructure Improvement and Pavement Improvement Program. Then we move on to council comments, Mayor. And as we move into a quick overview of what's happening in the City of Millbrae, I'd like to start out with our employee recognition program. On September 1st, on a Thursday, we had a wonderful employee recognition event where we acknowledged the outstanding work of all of our employees, and those employees that were a little bit extra-special, they all are, but these employees in particular. And we have three major awards, and then an MVP for each of the departments. So starting out with our Rising Star Award. Rising Star is the emerging leader with three years of service or less who demonstrates significant and exceptional growth within the city. This is well-deserved by the employee that won it, and it's Jennifer Lim. You all know her from my office. And Jennifer was recently promoted as an assistant planner here for the city. So it's fantastic to have an intern, the great work that she's done, and having an assistant city planner position for her. She's a graduate of University of Oregon in Environmental Studies, and she's been a great hire for us. Then we move forward to the Creative Innovator Award. This is an individual who provides innovative solutions and improves efficiency within the agency. This person from Public Works, Kevin Matlock, he's a maintenance worker too, and I'd say Kevin's been with the city for almost two decades, and he's one of those guys that is out in the field during the storms, you know, working hard, sometimes, you know, more than 24 hours a day when we need him. And he has the knowledge and expertise to get the job done cost-effectively, and comes up with innovative solutions to get the work done, and as I mentioned, cost-effectively and efficiently. And this is well-deserved by Kevin, who's also just an outstanding employee for us. Then we move forward to our department MVPs. And again, this is the most valuable team player in each department, selected by their peers and the department heads and supervisors. This is in recognition of outstanding work and the exhibit great leadership skills. So moving to the Administration Department, this another is a well-deserved recognition for Juan Yi Liang. She's our administrative analyst. She heads up or works for our Human Resources section, and does a great job for us in our recruitment, as well as liaison with our employees on all things personnel-related. Then we move forward to Community Development, and I think you all know this gentleman, Rosco Mata. He's our planning manager. Again, this is well-deserved. Rosco's worked very hard, again, with our previous Community Development Director on getting the general plan, the downtown specific plan, and the housing element in shape for adoption. And as you all know, that's coming up for the City Council's adoption November 15th. Then our Finance Department, Narisa Wong, she's an accountant for us. Narisa's been with us for several years, and again, she keeps, she gets us all in shape on the accounting. And Narisa's a pleasure to work with, great personality, and works very hard for us back in the Finance Department. And then in our Public Works Department, MVP Darren Zalflarelli. He again is somebody that demonstrates this outstanding work effort that is behind the scenes, that you don't really see. He's one of our plant operators at the sewer treatment plant. And again, he's somebody that during the storms will put in, you know, 24 hours plus to make sure that the plant is operating, all the INI infiltration during storms, and keeps the treatment plant flooding. And it's just been a dedicated employee to us, and well-deserved recognition for sure for Roland. And then our Recreation Department, Roland Tiano. He's a Recreation Coordinator. He actually just recently got promoted as well. Roland has done a great job in coordinating all of our special events, all of our facility rentals, just very well-liked out in the community. And Roland always goes above and beyond and demonstrates outstanding work for us, and he again is an outstanding, dedicated employee. And last but not least, our Employee of the Year is somebody that you all know, because she's worked hard helping with the project management of getting the brand-new Recreation Center delivered on time and on budget, and that's Jane Cow, our Senior Civil Engineer in Public Works. So that's a summary of all the employees' recognition this year. And again, we had a great, great event, great luncheon for the employees, and well-deserved. And with that, a couple of other items. Last Thursday night, we started, connects with the first Citizens Academy. We have a total of 16 residents that have signed up, and we have, after last Thursday, we have five more meetings, and have the graduation scheduled for, it changed, November 10th will be the graduation of all of our citizens. And so far, glowing, glowing reviews, glowing marks, all the feedback from the participants has been, it's good, and they've looked forward to it, and more to come. And then lastly, we have our new Public Works Director, the new Key Lim. We've kept that position vacant for budgetary reasons, and, you know, continue to stretch a rubber band. But our new Director of Engineering, Public Works, Sam Batista, will be starting Monday, October 3rd. Sam is an engineering graduate, he's a licensed engineer in California, he's a graduate of University of Southern California. Sam has worked with the City of Millbrae back when he was a young assistant engineer, then elevated his career as a principal engineer in South San Francisco, and has been a deputy Public Works engineer in Pacifica. And so really looking forward with Sam. He's very strong both in engineering and public works, and I think he's a great addition to our team. So Mayor, with that, that concludes my update this evening, and we can move to the remainder of the agenda.
Thank you, City Manager Tom Williams. So with that being said, I'd like to, we have no report out from our closed session, is that correct, Mike?
Mayor, Mike wasn't there, but I can say there's no reportable action this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schneider has a comment.
We do have a raised hand feature on this too, so if you guys want to help me out with that, that might be helpful.
Sorry, Mayor, I'll wait for item four.
Okay. So we'll move to approval of the minutes. We have the first, we have, maybe...
Yes, sorry. Without objection, can I move approval of both, please?
Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Holiber?
Aye.
Councilmember Feng?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappin?
Aye.
Mayor Liba?
Aye.
The two sets of minutes are passed by a vote of 5 to 0.
Okay. We have no oral reports from city committees or commission chairs tonight, so I'll move to public comment. And we do have a council, excuse me, we have Kathleen Kimura in the audience. Kathleen?
If you want to try it again, then we'll swap my comments. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers, and thank you for allowing us, sorry. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, and thank you for inviting us and allowing us to speak this evening. We basically are here to invite the community to come and attend our 17th Annual Millbrae Japanese Culture Festival, which is being held this coming Sunday, October 2nd. And with me today, I have Naomi Yamaguchi, she's on our committee, and Masami Saisu. The three of us have a committee of six here this evening. I'd like to thank the City of Millbrae and all the departments in the city for giving the support that they do. We couldn't do it without the Recreation Center, without the Public Works, without Parks and Rec, and also the Mayor and City Council. So thank you very much for that. And also, we wouldn't be able to do it without our sponsors, and we're very, very grateful to all of our sponsors who have been helping us, including the City of Millbrae, the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce, who acts as our fiscal agent, our silver sponsors, our general sponsors, and all of our supporters. And our Sister City Commission is going to be having a booth there again this year, which is very nice, because we'll have the Honorable Consul of Malta being there with Mosta. And also, the Consul General of Chile has indicated to me that he would like to come again to the event, so he'll be saying hello to the Sister Cities Booth. And also, the Consul General of Japan and his wife will be coming as well. And this Consul General arrived in San Francisco only two weeks ago. Unfortunately, his predecessor had to leave because of illness, and so they appointed a new Consul General a little while ago, and he arrived two weeks ago, and he's ready to come, he's anxious to come, he's looking forward to coming. So we're very grateful to that. The festival is at 10:30, it ends at 4:30. We have live stage performances. We have many new vendors this year, some very, very nice vendors selling Japanese products. We have Japanese food and drink, and exhibits, and demonstrations, and a lot of activities for everyone, children and adults alike. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Oh, and also, I would like to give a shout-out to the Millbrae Leos, and also to the Mills Interact Club. We've received many, many applications to volunteer from both of those organizations this year, and I think it's a great example of the youth of Millbrae. So we're very happy that so many youth are going to be involved in our festival. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kathleen, I just want to thank you very much for once again putting yourself forward and making such a great... and making such a great event for our city with your committee. And I'm sure that most of us will be there to help support that. It's always a wonderful event. Thank you so much.
I know that the consul general is looking forward to meeting the mayor and all council members. So looking forward to seeing you all. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Madam Mayor, sorry. Kathleen, the cultural arts advisory committee will all be talking later about their art show. And I know you and I mentioned, but this year it's multimedia, so ceramics, I know there's always beautiful Japanese ceramics and flower arranging. So I will make sure that I'm there on Sunday. I know there's some changes with the flower arranger, but it's always one of my favorite parts. But we would love to have them come to the art show and submit materials because it's multimedia this year. Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on. We are in public communications. We're going to move to Lisa Strange. Lisa?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
We hear you.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Lisa Strange and I serve as the Northern California Outreach Manager at the Department of Insurance. You're probably used to hearing from Mary Beth Baikowski. She's the outreach analyst actually assigned to Millbrae. But she had a conflict tonight, so I'm here to update you on what we've been doing on behalf of your constituents. Since 2019, we've met with more than 25,000 people in 40 counties and we've held about 60 events to specifically hear concerns around both availability and affordability for homeowners insurance. In January of this year, the insurance commissioner and the state's emergency response and readiness agencies created the Safer From Wildfire Framework, which is a consistent approach to reducing risk with a list of achievable, certifiable and effective actions to help make existing homes and businesses safer from wildfires. The ultimate goal is protecting consumers by reducing risk in their communities. And this is really a ground-up approach for wildfire resilience and it has three layers. We pretty much refer to it as the Safer From Wildfire 1, 2, 3 Plan. So number one is protect your structure. Number two would be protect your immediate surroundings, which would include any outbuildings, sheds and decks and things like that. And then number three, involve your entire community to prevent wildfires from catching and spreading to other homes and businesses in the neighborhood. This includes things like enhanced infrastructure and programs like Fire Wise. You can see the entire list of specific actions that you can take on our website, which is So what we're trying to do is by making homes and businesses safer, it will bring down the risk and then, which will bring down costs as well. So the commissioner's actions are focused on safety and transparency, which will, these regulations will do this in three ways. Require insurance companies to incorporate this pricing, incorporate this framework into their pricing. Consumers will receive their property wildfire risk score and the reasons for it and be able to appeal it. And customers will be able to, oh yeah, be able to appeal their risk score. And we've heard in the past, you haven't even been able to get it because it was considered proprietary. So I think this is really a big, this will be a really big. These regulations went to the Office of Administrative Law and we expect them to be approved by January. And again, once they are, we expect that what you do the work, so we want you to see the reward and receive a discount in your insurance. Again, you can find all this information on our website at insurance.ca.gov. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. I think next up is former mayor Wayne Lee, Wayne J. Lee. There you go.
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I just wanted to ask the staff to have a, I think you're planning to, but we need to have more discussion about this transit housing that's going to happen on Hemlock by the county. There's a lot of, I think there's a lot of misinformation out there and people are making a lot of assumptions that we need to address very quickly. The other thing too, is that during my walks around the neighborhoods, the, there's still concerns about flooding in that Hillcrest underpass, under the railroad tracks. If it be possible, if we could have put gates on there whenever it floods for some reason, if, you know, if there's, if the pumps can't keep up or a pump fails. I mean, it probably will happen again and there's no fault of our, of staff, but, you know, things happen. So there should be, there's an easy way, it's not that hard, I mean, it's not a very, it's not rocket science to have a sensor that lowers gates in case of a flooding that 's inappropriate for cars to go through. In the same way, we should also have a process in having the other side open so then people can transit out in case that floods and/or put a gate there for just residents. Using technology nowadays, it's easy to scan a car or phone, so only residents can get in and out. Also, in landing lane, I mean, sorry, in Marina Vista, there's only one way in and out of that neighborhood. If there's a fire, that is there's a large fire that goes through the neighborhood or God's sake, there's more flooding because of sea level rise, there's only one way out. So I highly suggest the council start looking into ways of providing a emergency egress for that area as well. So I just wanted to thank the council for talking with me about these issues as well and the city manager in being aware. He's given me a lot of updates and advice on how we could make our city better. So I'd like to thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next up, I think John Munoz, is that your hand up? John? Okay, you're muted, John.
Yes, that's me.
There you go. Go for it.
Thank you, Mayor Leba, city council and city manager Williams. My name is John Munoz, a 28-year resident of Millbrae. Tonight, my dissertation concerns one of my favorite subjects, the largest intermodal transportation hub west of the Mississippi. Yes, you guessed it, the Millbrae BART station. To put it mildly, what a dump. The Millbrae BART station is a rusting relic and a prime example of social decay that has run amok. It is a nightmare of filth, garbage and despair. It has become an open-air latrine. It is a disgusting example of what happens when the gangsters who run BART do not care. It has become so tacky, filthy, windows, elevators, escalators, ticket vending machines, dripping in filth. One kudo I can give the BART, they cleaned up the seagull guano. Let us face it, the Millbrae BART station is the symbol of Millbrae. It deserves better and we are not getting. What a disgrace and despair it brings to Millbrae's doors. Quality of life issues, mental illness, crime, transients and drugs. Four years ago, the city of Millbrae council, concerned citizens and myself paid a visit to the BART station. And we met with the BART director at that time. I recall vividly one improvement he mentioned he would make, replace the turnstiles with new ones that could not be jumped over. Well, that never happened. So here we are today. We have the multimillion-dollar gateway about to open, life science projects in construction and one day, the Sierra Station project. In the middle of all those beautiful revenue generating improvements, a monument to mismanagement and despair. Happy 50th anniversary, BART. Thank you.
Thank you, John. So we have NorCal Carpenters, Albert Lusrey.
Can you guys hear me?
We hear you.
Good evening, mayors and city council members. My name is Albert Lusrey. I'm with the NorCal Carpenter Union Local 217. And the reason why I'm here today is because I want to speak about areas, area labor standards in this beautiful city. What are area labor standards, you may ask? Well, it's simple, include liberal wages, healthcare, apprenticeship programs and local hire for the construction workforce. Liberal wages, employees should have a way to provide all the basic with family, which includes a decent roof and food on the table. Employees should also be able to have healthcare for his whole family. We cannot have these employees or members of this family not going to the doctor or dentist because they cannot have a way to pay for these services. Apprenticeship, it helps the work, the working-class workers gain knowledge so they can build the projects to the highest degree by implementing all the skills that they learn in the training centers and at the job sites. These apprentices are the future builders of America. Local hire, local hire benefits our entire community, not only tax revenue for money spent by workers, but also ensuring that our contractors are not bringing workforce out of state that's driving our wages to the ground, making our local workforce commute for hours to make ends meet instead of spending time with the family or getting involved in a community. These are the policies ensure that all new development benefits all the members of the community. We got to do a better job when it comes down to labor and labor and project to be a builder in our city. We have major issues where workers being taken advantage by construction, not paying area labor standards, wages and standards are simple, include liberal wages, healthcare, promotes apprenticeship programs and local hire. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Schneider, your hands up. Did you want to go to the podium and speak at the podium?
If you prefer that. I had someone who couldn't be here tonight, so they text me it's an announcement for something next week. What would you prefer?
Yeah, you're going to have to go to the podium and...
Anne Schneider, representing the, or speaking for the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce, who could not be here tonight. They wanted to let the public know and the candidates know that Millbrae Chamber of Commerce, MCTV, will be hosting the candidates forum on Monday, October 3rd, 2022, from 7:00 to 8:30 here in Millbrae City Council chambers. It will be in person, people can attend and provide questions in person, or they can send questions to millbrea candidate forum@gmail.com. And that's M-I-L-L-B-R-A-E-C-A-N-D-I-D-A-T-E-F-O-R-U-M at gmail, G-M-A-I-L dot com. And they're taking questions now and the candidates are being reached at this moment for the forum before the ballots drop. Thank you.
Okay, public comments. We're going to move to consent calendar and we have one, two, three, three items on the consent calendar. The adoption of a resolution finding that the proclaimed state of an emergency continues to impact the ability to meet safely in person and declaring that the city council and city commissions and committees will continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. Item number six, to receive and file monthly general fund financial reports for the period ending August 31st, 2022. And item number seven, the approval of fee waiver for the Rotary Kids Carnival on October 30th, 2022.
Pappen, move approval of items five, six and seven.
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Holber?
Aye.
Councilmember Fong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappen?
Aye.
Mayor Leba?
Aye.
Thank you. The consent calendar is approved by five to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to item number eight, which is a public hearing. Persons who wish to speak on matters set for the public hearing will be heard when the proceeding officer calls for comments from those persons who are in support or in opposition thereto. After oral testimony has been given, the hearing is closed unless continued to another time and brought to the council level for discussion and action. Normally, no further oral testimony is permitted unless requested and allowed by the council. So now, item number eight is consideration of a resolution making the draft findings and declaring an intent to consider overriding the San Mateo City-County Association of Governments, San Mateo County Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with the policy of the comprehensive airport land use capacity compatibility, Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan to allow with a conditional use permit hazardous uses classified as biosafety level two, uses in the transient oriented development zone portions located north of the Millbrae Avenue, south of the MSASP boundary, east of El Camino Real and west of the railroad, within the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan for the environments of the San Francisco International Airport Safety Compatibility Zone 2. So with that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. And Roscoe, do you have a report for us or a presentation?
Yes, I have a presentation this evening.
Thank you, Roscoe.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Roscoe Mata. Is this better? Sorry. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Roscoe Mata. I am the planning manager and I'm also joined today by Nasser Guvara, who assisted with this effort. The item before you tonight is consideration of a resolution making draft findings and declaring an intent to consider overruling the City-County Association of Governments of San Mateo County Airport Land Use Committee, determination of inconsistency regarding the proposed zoning text amendment to the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan for specific biotechnology uses. By way of background, in 2021, the city council adopted two resolutions, one of which is to override CCG's decision that the MSASP amendments for biosafety level two uses in the SFO ILUCP Safety Zone 2 were inconsistent in the TOD zone. And this is the area south of Millbrae Avenue. And the other resolution is to amend the MSASP to allow these uses. The overhaul in 2021 did not include specific draft findings related to allowing biosafety level two uses in the portion of MSASP TOD zone located north of Millbrae Avenue. The action in 2021 overruled the determination and made findings for the area in the red dotted box on the image in the screen here. This area was the area in the MSASP that was, that was allowed to have biotechnology The item before you tonight is to make another motion and draft findings for the area, TOD area in the green dotted outline. This is the area, as I mentioned, north of Millbrae Avenue, east of the Caltrain Station and then west of, I'm sorry, west of the Caltrain Station and then east of El Camino Just a little bit of a refresher regarding the biosafety levels. Biosafety level two involves clinical diagnostic teaching and other laboratories working with indigenous modest-risk agents that are already present in the community. Some examples of this is influenza, HIV, Lyme disease, salmonella, some of the more exotic viruses such as Ebola and smallpox are biosafety level four. This is not including that. This is just for biosafety level two. The next steps after this evening is the city would provide a notice of intent to consider the override to the ALUC and Caltrans Aeronautics Division, which begins a 45-day review period. ALUC and Caltrans, 30 days to respond to the city's notice of intent. And then the final step is that the city council will make a final action at a public hearing to override the determination with findings and adopt the amendments to the So just to recap, tonight's action is staff is recommending that the council, and I'll read this just into the, into the record, adopt a resolution making draft findings and declaring an intent to consider overriding the San Mateo City-County Association of Governments, San Mateo County Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with the policies of the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan for the environments of San Francisco International Airport, regarding zoning text amendment to the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan to allow with a conditional use permit hazardous uses classified as biosafety level two uses in the TOD zone, north of Millbrae Avenue, south of the MSASP boundary, east of El Camino and west of the railroad, within the comprehensive airport land use compatibility plan for the environments of San Francisco International Airport Safety Compatibility Zone 2. And the second part of the action is to provide notice in accordance with sections 21676B and 21676.5A of the California Public Utilities Code to the Airport Land Use Commission and the State of California Department... the State of California Department of Transportation's Division of Aeronautics at least 45 days prior to the public hearing date for the proposed project and proposed overhaul decision by the City Council. Staff is available for any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Roscoe. Any questions, council? This is an action item.
I think you need to ask for a public comment.
Excuse me, thank you so much, Vice Mayor. Do we have any public comment? Nathan Chan. Thank you, Nathan.
Hi, yes, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak on this item. I mostly have questions. So I took time to read the staff report, and to me, it sounds like overriding CCG's determination on what's allowable and recommended in the airport safety zone seems pretty serious. And yet, I keep asking people, what are the consequences of making this decision? And it never seems to, I never seem to get a straight answer. Like, I don't quite understand why the, the CCG decision isn't binding in some way, and I don't understand why the city can just decide to overrule it. I saw some mentioned in the staff report about how any developer or who ultimately decides to use the land for a biotech facility wouldn't be able to hold the city liable. Is that the only thing that happens in this case? What kind of liability existed before, before, between the developer and the city? So, yeah, to me, as a sort of layperson trying to understand what the stakes of this decision are, it's really unclear. Is CCG gonna get mad at us for overruling them for the second time? And to be clear, you know, I am, I think, I too am excited about the possibility that a biotech office can, will be coming to Millbrae. But, yeah, it's really difficult to understand what the stakes of this decisions are, this decision are, and what the consequences are, and why it's so easy for the city to just say, you know what, we're just gonna ignore this determination on land use compatibility. So, yeah, just, you know, just a helpful, basic explanation would be, I think, really help me and anyone else who's trying to understand the gravity of this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that that question can be answered maybe outside the chambers. Yes, Michael.
It's public comment, Madam Mayor, has to be answered within.
Well, I'll take, I got a couple of things. Well, one is, this gentleman's a planning commissioner, so I do think it's appropriate to perhaps provide training on local land use decisions and local land use control. But the answer, I think, is most specific question is what are the consequences? And our findings are, the, the reason why, well, let me go back. The airport land use commissions, airport land use plan needs to be updated. South San Francisco, City of Millbrae, City of San Bruno have all, their councils have all overridden decisions of the airport land use commission. And so I think that the impact that, in terms of bioservice level two in this area, there is no real, real threat. Literally, less than 100 feet from this location, the airport contours changing, and bioservice level two is allowed and is compatible with the airport land use plan. But that being said, I think that, you know, we've studied it, we've analyzed it, and there is no, no significant impact.
Hi, I thought it'd be helpful if I gave you just a little legal background. The basic purpose of these actions has to do with liability. If the city does this override, then it has the effect of releasing the airport from liability in case there is a, you know, aircraft accident that would release this, these specific biosafety level two microbes. What that means is that the city, I mean, that the airport would be off the hook. The way the city has addressed this in the other areas and will here is that any developer who wants to come in with that use will be required to, to sign an indemnity agreement with the city, taking on that use, so that the city's net liability will not increase as a result of, of this action. I will also say this, we, we've looked at this for the other areas as well. This particular area is, is not the subject of a lot of air traffic, even though it's treated the same as the other runways that the airport has. And so, you know, compared to those, the, the risk is considerably lower. And as, as the city manager indicated, you know, we feel that the airport land use policy could be modified to reflect that, but that, that has not been their practice to date. So this is, again, relatively, you know, not that dangerous microbes that they're working with. There's a lot of this activity in South San Francisco, and as he noted, very close to this area, it's, it's perfectly acceptable to do it, and, and we don't think that's a great increase. And, and we're covering that potential liability by making sure that all the developers are, and their successors are on the hook should, should anything happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. Any more public comments? I don't see any hands raised. I see something for Vice Mayor Papin. Your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, the airport land use is out of date. It was fully discussed, or I've brought it up several times at CCG. It needs to be updated in several manners here. One of the updates we'd also like to see is somehow allowing childcare in this vicinity. We did point out at CCG that before an airplane gets anywhere near this area, it's probably gonna hit those high-powered wires. So it'd be secondary, if anything. But there has been a refusal by the airport land use to update anything, and that's kind of way behind the times. So this passing at the city council level is just the process that we get to, the steps we take in order to hopefully get them to move in the right direction. But since they don't do that, this is how we approach it, Mr. Chan, and thank you very much for your comment.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion, to close the public hearing.
Second, to close public hearing.
Okay, do we have, do we have a motion for item number eight?
I, I think we have to close the public hearing first, take a vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to take a vote. Sorry. Can we take a vote, Elaine, please?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin?
Aye.
Mayor Aliva?
Aye.
The public comment is closed.
Thank you.
Public hearing, excuse me.
Next, item number, do we have, item number eight, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, can we please call for the vote?
Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fong?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Papin?
Aye.
Mayor Aliva?
Aye.
Public hearing number eight passed by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much. Next item would be existing business of which we have none. I'll move to our last item of new business, our last item, it is new business, and that is a resolution approving the contract change order to the Millbrae Rec Center project with Block Construction Company in the amount of $1,489,600, and increasing the total construction, construction budget by $1,639,600, including contingencies for the Lincoln Circle infrastructure and pavement improvements, and amending the fiscal year 2022, 2023 capital improvement program. And Harry, do we have Harry Burrows?
I'm here. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I'm Harry Burrows. I'm the city's contract project manager. And tonight, item before you is to discuss the infrastructure upgrades and pavement rehabilitation for the Lincoln Circle project, which is associated with the Millbrae Recreation So Lincoln Circle is the main thoroughfare into and out of the Millbrae Recreation Center from the north. The rehabilitation and repaving of Lincoln Circle was always envisioned to be a part of the Recreation Center project, but was designated as a future phase pending available budget and funding. As the construction of the Rec Center neared its completion, staff evaluated the needs for the infrastructure replacement of Lincoln Circle. So this exhibit shows Lincoln Circle and some of the utilities within it. The existing roadway has a pavement condition index known as a PCI of seven out of 100, and seven is well below the, the fail, failure level of pavement. So it's very bad condition. Also, the underground utilities are all at the end of their useful life, 50-plus years in age. So against that, plans have been prepared to replace sewer, water, and streetlight system within Lincoln Circle. The sewer system was recently replaced, and it's shown here on the left-hand side and the right-hand side of this exhibit in green dash lines, as well as across the middle of the alleyway between the apartments. So that, that was recently replaced as part of a change order to an existing city sewer Staff sought and received a proposal from Block Construction Company, and they're the contractor for the Recreation Center, to perform the underground utility replacement work and pavement work, including a new eight-inch PVC water line that's shown here in blue, new streetlight conduits, circuitry and wiring that's shown here in red, installation of new streetlights, and the roadway repaving and rehabilitation, which is shown in white. So some of the, a summary of the proposed work that I just described is listed here. Although not part of the bid proposal from Block, we'll also ask them to install a recycled water line along the eastern leg of Lincoln Circle, and I'll back up a second if I may. And that's shown here on the right-hand side of this exhibit on the eastern leg. And the idea here is to install a recycled water stub. We don't have recycled water in this area yet, but this will have the pipe in the ground so that we avoid digging up Lincoln Circle in the future to install recycled water once we have that availability. And I think this last point is worth noting because, you know, this entire project is a good example of the implementation of the city's, City Council's one-dig policy, whereby we replace existing underground utility infrastructure in advance of or concurrent with any paving project that we're doing, so that we don't have to go back later and rip up newly installed pavement for utility replacement. So having Block Construction Company perform the work makes sense from several different standpoints. They can easily, or we can easily change order this work into their existing design-build contract with the city. They can begin the work immediately, and it saves us time for having to go out and prepare detailed, you know, contract, new bid contract documents with another contractor. So against that, Block submitted a cost proposal to do this work of $1,489,600. Staff recommends that we add a 10% contingency of about $150,000 to that contract amount, and that's primarily to cover unforeseen conditions that we might encounter in the field. We have not done detailed geotechnical investigations of this entire stretch of roadway, so we may encounter areas of weak pavement, what we call subbase failures. So this contingency is primarily to do overexcavation and deep lift pavement in those areas if they should be encountered. And again, this project is an example of the implementation of the city's one-dig policy. So tonight, we're asking that the City Council approve a contract change order with Block Construction Company in the amount of $1,489,600, and increase the total construction budget for the entire project by $1,639 million, including the contingency, and amend the fiscal year 2022, 2023 capital improvement program to reflect this. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Let's start with Councilmember Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Great report. We've got to get some new photographs up there. Couple of questions. When we're doing all the work, and I totally support going forward, but is there an opportunity to look at adding some trees in that area? We should be thinking adding trees every time we're doing any kind of infrastructure, as trees are infrastructure. Is there a chance that the new surface will be rubberized asphalt? And then, later on, I'm assuming both the Vice Mayor and I might talk about OBag 3. If the city does receive this grant from OBag 3 that will be an electric shuttle system, will there be a place in front of the Rec Center that we might want to mark off as a shuttle stop? Or at least have it for the future plans when that project comes through? I think, I think all of this is great, but if, if we could get any kind of bio-swell in there at the same time, I was trying to figure out how we might get bike pedestrian in there. But again, as long as we have that in a future plan and we can someday get the funding, or even to connect the type of green paint we've got on Richmond into the, the Rec Center might be just that tiny step farther in making us more bike pedestrian friendly. So, great job, fully support it. But I would love to see rubberized asphalt and trees.
Harry, did you want to answer that, or did you want to wait to hear everybody's comments?
I'll wait and see if there's any other comments.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm just curious, two points. Does this, or could this, since we have a one-dig policy, relate in any way to whatever, Wi-Fi or just increasing accessibility to people in the apartment complex? I'm probably not saying this correctly, but, because we do need to improve our internet access throughout the city. That's my first question. My second question is, do we do anything these days? We all have global warming, so the color of the asphalt that's put in, reducing the temperature in any way, shape, or form, we learned some things at the Cal Cities Conference, which would be helpful. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
Mayor, I actually forgot one. When the work starts, we've, we've currently, or at least I've gotten emails from residents on Lincoln Circle who can't park in the recreation parking lot, but do you think we can have a plan when the work starts that people will have alternate parking options? And possibly that would be the Rec Center, even if only temporary. And it would be great to get all of these apartments to be thinking about a TDM plan. I don't know how we do it with multiple owners, but it is time. That area is very heavily parked, all the way out to Richmond, and the overflow comes all the way down to Lansdale and onto Palm Avenue. So, a little bit bigger and beyond your parking, or the, the pavement project, but start thinking about that.
And I had one more thing, too. Are the neighbors being notified of this construction?
They will be.
Okay. That'd be important. Thank you.
Okay, before Harry answers these questions, I'm gonna open it up to the public. I don't see any hands up here. Okay, Harry, those are your questions on this so far.
Okay, thank you. The, the question regarding the trees, City Manager Williams would like to address that question.
Well, yeah, I, I think that's a good question. We have our landscape design, you know, that was approved for the Recreation Center, but we can take a look at, at street trees, and if that's a desire of a majority of the council, bring that plan back. We did at one time actually propose street trees along the Lincoln Circle frontage, but the landscape architect, LSA at the time, had recommended against it, but I still think it has some merit. Because those street trees along that corridor, fronting the Rec Center into the park could be quite nice. And then the shuttle question, the roundabout at the front door, so we wouldn't need a shuttle stop actually on the curb in front of the Recreation Center. We could use a roundabout and pick up and drop people off if we implement the shuttle program. We could use a roundabout and pick up and drop people if we implement the shuttle program.
Sir, can I add to that briefly? Last week, we had a Recreation Center Subcommittee meeting, and Vice Mayor Pappan and I discussed and suggested perhaps planting a couple of trees along the side of the building that faces the parking lot, because it's a bit bare right now.
Yep.
Could I only add, we had talked in the past where those trellises are, that if we can't get trees, maybe we can get trellises that will provide shade and green on that too. Things that are fast-growing, like wisteria that have beautiful flowers, or grapes that provide food.
And birds. I don't think we want that.
Okay, let's, let's stick to what's on the agenda here, guys.
Yeah, so let me, if I can, address a couple of the other questions. The question regarding rubberized asphalt, I mean, we can certainly ask Block for a quote to use rubberized asphalt instead of hot mix asphalt. But typically, for a project of this scale and a local street like this, it's probably not going to make a whole lot of sense to use rubberized asphalt here, but we'll, we'll look into it.
Mr. Burrows, I would only say typically 20% more, or 10% more, but lasts 20% longer. And in a climate change, hot environment, the flexibility with heat and cold is going to really start paying off.
Understood. And the question regarding parking, yeah, we'll certainly work with Block about what we can do and evaluate options for parking during construction for the residents. And then Mayor, or Vice Mayor Pappan, your question regarding the internet accessibility, this is actually a question that Councilmember Fung raised as well. And what we'll do is we'll explore adding, since we're putting in a streetlight conduit, throwing another conduit in the ground is not that big of an expense in a few other junction boxes, so we'll, we'll explore that. And budget considerations allowing, we'll, we'll add those, we'll add that extra conduit.
There might be some state money related to that, that would help us in that process. Thanks.
Mr. Burrows, can I ask a question about that, given that I live nearby? AT&amp;T updated the fiber optics in this neighborhood a couple of years ago. Do we connect in with the systems that AT&amp;T or Comcast might have been upgrading, or is it something separate? I know they did Palm Avenue, so...
Yeah, I, I think what we typically do is we put the backbone infrastructure into the ground, so we provide the conduits for them to pull the cable, for the vendors to pull the cabling through.
Thank you.
Any other questions, or did I address everyone's questions?
I think you got everybody.
Just want to say thank you for accommodating the purple pipe. That was a good feature. Thank you very much.
I think I did have one on the color of the concrete, or the surfacing. There's certain colors evidently reduce greenhouse gases.
You mean rechaining, or reducing the temperature?
Yeah.
Of the surface? Like a, like a more paler-looking asphalt?
Yeah, there's additives that you can put into the asphalt mix to, to change the color. Again, that's not something that we asked Block to propose on, but we're happy to explore that.
I think we need to start standardizing that type of thing, because we're going to be under certain greenhouse gas reductions, so if we can start heading in that direction, it'd be helpful. Thank you.
I don't want to go off tangent here, but perhaps we can look into our public work ordinance on repaving in the future, whether it's private or public. That way, all the contractors who does it will have to adhere to that standard instead of being in a change order.
Yeah, and just on that note, we, we are going out for revised standard specifications as we speak, so depending on what the budget is, it may be under the $50,000, you know, city manager authority. Not we will be bringing that back to the council shortly, I hope it is, but updating our standards and specs in our public works is on the, on the work task list.
It was actually part of the capital improvement program that was recently approved by the council.
All right, council. We have an item here, a resolution approving a contract change order to the Milbrae Recreation Center project with Block Construction Company in the amount of $1,489,600, and increasing the total construction budget by $1,639,600, including contingencies for the Lincoln Circle infrastructure and pavement improvements, and amending the fiscal year 2022 to 2023 capital improvement program.
Enders will move to approval.
Second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Can we please call for the vote? Councilmember Snyder?
Aye.
Councilmember Holliver?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pappan?
Aye.
Mayor Leva?
Aye. New business item number nine, passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. Council, it is 8:21. We haven't done this in a long time. I'm going to move on to council comments. I asked, like everybody else in the public and everybody else at this meeting, that we keep these comments to three minutes.
Can we have the timer, just so we can see? Try to get to that room.
I'm going to be the timer. Can we get?
It's easier for us if Elaine does it, we can see it. Okay.
All right. Vice Mayor, you go first.
Oh gee, thanks. Okay. I was happy to participate in the Japanese Friendship Tennis Tournament, another great year for that. Cal Cities Conference in Long Beach. Couple of things I'd really like us to look at that came out of that is redefining public comments. The governor passed an initiative that said required civility, and also, it turns out that not everything is considered a public comment to a city council. Evidently, it has to be something that would be in the realm of some issues that would come before the city council. The example used was somebody talking about Britney Spears. Not allowed. So I ask that we try to redefine that for the benefit of our public. Also, expectations during design and standards, we are approaching our general plan. I'm hoping we can be a little more specific as to, I know we can't enforce a lot of things, but if we set out expectations for ADUs or garage conversions, it would be helpful. Final element from that was, I do believe it's very important to have some fentanyl awareness. It is becoming quite a tragedy everywhere. So if we could get an informational item on the agenda. CCAG Ledge Committee, certain legislation is coming down. We were sad to see the seamless legislation got stuck in appropriations, but hope that Senator Becker will bring that back to us. I opened the Citizens Academy, and the group looks great, very engaged, and welcome them because the mayor was out of town. MTC tomorrow is bringing up a transit-oriented communities policy. I will likely be asking them to continue or to abstain from that because our jurisdiction has not had a chance to evaluate that. It looks like Milbrae will be able to comply, but the other jurisdictions may not. Economic Vitality Met, we looked at some new banners for the city. We also looked at the Parklets. There was some criticism about the chambers handling of the Art and Wine Festival, a lack of advertising. I don't believe they've met recently, but it'd be good to get an update from them. Oh, also, at the Cal Cities, there was some information on monuments, since we are looking at a new entry to the city. I hope that we can look more closely at what's available to us. Went to the Caltrain Electrification opening, which is very, very exciting. By next year, all the Caltrains should be electrified, a lot quieter, much more efficient. And there's a pilot program, CMAC, on micro-mobility that we are looking to participate in. I made it. Thank you very much.
Good job. Okay, Councilmember Snyder, you're up. Can you do it?
MCAC, want to thank all of the volunteers for the Adopt a Spot Planning Meeting, and then last Saturday, actually planting new plants. Everyone should go look at the corner of Hemlock and Hillcrest. And a huge shout-out to staff, Craig, Andre, John and John, and City Manager Williams, who are all digging holes and planting plants out there. MCAC, our Culture Arts Advisory Committee, is having its, it's hosting Milbrae's art show. It'll be October 21st and 22nd at the new Recreation Center. This is the first time it's going to be multimedia, which pretty much means any form of art, from quilting to painting, watercolor sculpture, video, and even, I am hopeful for flower arranging, because at least Ikebana is a beautiful, beautiful art form. The submittals are all on the city website. Go to the website and Google or search for "art show contest" and begin submitting. If you have any problems, reach out to our staff person, Jeffrey Gabriel, at GGabriel at CI.Milbrae.ca.us. MCAC is also hosting a Day of the Dead activity. It'll be at the rec center, and likely starting off at the art show and running through the official Day of the Dead, Dia de los Muertos, on November 1st, possibly November 2nd. More news will be coming shortly on that. CCAG BPAC, Milbrae did not initially get an OBag 3 grant. We applied for $880,000 for an electric shuttle system from around the train station up to downtown, and I wasn't sure if it actually went to the rec center, but through some very terrific lobbying by the Vice Mayor, so thank you, Vice Mayor, and myself and the city manager, somehow CCAG found $800,000. Now, MTC still has to award us, but if we get it, that'll be really exciting, a way to meet, bring people downtown and from the east and the west side. The SFO Roundtable legislation for next year, it's a big year for FAA reauthorization. I'm hearing more from residents who are really tired of noise, and what we have to do in the FAA reauthorization is make sure that they have to account for the noise that we are impacted with, which is low-frequency noise. I am happy to go into detail. I will remind the city manager that we promised to have a couple of Milbrae-specific meetings to try to bring the public up. So if we can get through the election and some of our other big projects, we can begin to work on that. Sea Level Rise had their meeting yesterday. They have finished the LiDAR investigation of Milbrae, so LiDAR is remote sensing of our east side and are working on recommendations. SFO Roundtable has released their EIR for their sea level rise work. It includes the city of Milbrae's property. One Shoreline recommends that our city and all cities comment separately on the EIR, and Cal Cities franchise fees may be under Mike Sung. We better look at our franchise fees and make sure we're okay. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much. Councilmember Fung?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try to be brief. Little update on Youth Advisory Committee. They had their first meeting at the beginning of September. Welcome Frederick as a new chair and Tanner as our new vice chair. They've discussed many things on a new work plan. They seem to be very open in meeting in person as quickly as they can. And then there's also an interest in working with the Senior Advisory Committee to restart the senior technology program soon, so hopefully more to come. PCE, Peninsula Clean Energy, we had our annual retreat, my first. It was over four hours, it was fun. It turns out that there's still a lot of rebates available for everybody in Sematow County, especially for city of Milbrae, obviously. You know, 3% of our population, the city of Milbrae contributed to about 3% of the population in Sematow County, and yet, they have this heat pump, water heater rebate program where we're only getting 1.4% of the entire rebate being handed out. Much room for improvement here for us, so everyone, you know, for those who are considering changing out your water heater, please think about getting a heat pump water heater that will get rid of the reliance on natural gas, and you get a $1,500 rebate from PCE. E-bike program, same thing. There is still an excellent program, and then there's a lot of rebate available for that. Electric vehicle incentives, you know, they're off, PCE is offering incentives on electric vehicles, including used EVs. And little do we know, the electrification technology, technical assistant program is available for building professionals and architects, and I know a few of them here in Milbrae, or those who work on Milbrae projects. They offer design assistance and another training for those who are looking to electrify the entire house. So, so take advantage of those. And for low-income household, upgrading an electrification program, up to $8,000 for home repair. So plenty of those that are still available to many homeowners in Milbrae. Take advantage of that. Last but not least, I got a regular flu about 10 days ago, so don't forget, everybody. Still get your flu shot. You know, regular flu still accounted for about $20,000 a year, so do not overlook the importance of that. Also, get your COVID booster, the bivalent shots are available. You can get them both at the same time. I did. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Fung. Councilmember Holliver?
Okay, thank you. So I attended the CCAG, CMAC Committee Meeting yesterday. Council, Vice Mayor Pappan already discussed that, and Councilmember Snyder mentioned the grant that we'll be receiving. I believe we're also receiving funding from the state for bike lanes along El Camino Real, both in Milbrae and San Bruno, about $800,000, that is coming from state funding, thanks to Assemblymember Mullin. Let's see, also attended the Commute.org Board Meeting last week. A couple of weeks ago, there was a discussion on the annual work plan, as well as a survey result that was presented, I think it was done by the Bay Area Council regarding in-person work and where employers are now compared to earlier on in the pandemic. And, you know, a lot of us, anecdotally, seemed to be working hybrid schedules, IM, for example. But interestingly, the most common responses were either zero or five days a week, and fewer employers were answering, you know, between one to four days in office. So it'll be interesting to keep an eye on that and see how these patterns change in the coming months. I also attended the library JPA meeting last week, and there was an adoption of the final, final budget for the year. Also, a lot of interesting programs that are going on. I believe there's going to be an online tutoring program that's going to be, that was announced by the governor recently, that'll be available through the libraries, so that will be interesting and very helpful. Attended the Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting last week, not a whole lot of new business. They're continuing virtual meetings for now, but may consider in-person meetings in the coming months. I think there's also a question as to how long the state of emergency will last, which allows for hybrid or remote meetings to, to continue. And the Sister Cities Commission discussed a monument plaque that they are looking to place at the tree that was recently planted a few months ago by the rec center, just a fairly small plaque. And they're talking to a couple of vendors about, about that, and I think we'll plan and move forward on that in the next, in the coming months. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody had a lot, and I think everything pretty much has been said. I just want to give great thanks to Elaine and Eduardo for, and MCTV for this technology. It looks, it appears that we had over 18 attendees virtually, and I was told that there was about eight in person, so attendance is alive, and I think having the option to do, this was a little test here, to run a meeting halfway virtually and not. And Elaine and Eduardo and MCTV, thank you very, very much. I think they've mastered it, huh? Did we do okay? Yes? Good? Comments? Well, I'm going to end in saying thank you to everybody, and have a good night. Meeting adjourned.
In honor of, where are we? In memory of, where are we? Journey in memory of Bianca Nicole Reyes Vela Valia, the daughter of Public Works Management Analyst Rosa Valia.